Ministers the New York CBPG funds and whereas the Office of Community Renewal has required that the City of Port Jervis enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Port Jervis CDA in order to continue to be eligible to receive said funds and whereas the sub-recipient agreement will authorize the Port Jervis CDA to continue to administer said funds on behalf of the City of Port Jervis, who is the physical custodian of said funds, therefore allowing the City of Port Jervis to continue to be eligible for said CBPG funds. And now therefore it being resolved as follows, that the City of Port Jervis Common Council does hereby authorize the Mayor of the City of Port Jervis to sign such an agreement with the Port Jervis CDA for a period of three years dating from the full execution of the document by both parties. And I make that a motion for this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, a second by Mr. Ritchie, to allow the City to enter an agreement with the CDA as a sub-recipient of the CBPG funds. Any discussion?
Mayor, just that this original agreement was constructed in 2012 and authorized at that time and it's now expired, so we need to renew it to continue for the next three years.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And the next CDA meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 25th at 7:00 PM, second floor of the Pike Street Rec Center. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ritchie, IDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The IDA hasn't met since our last meeting. We've been scheduled to meet this Wednesday, June 11th, roughly 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hendrick, KDA.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The ADA met on Thursday, June 6th. Jennifer Foster was elected chairperson. We spoke about the possible location for curb cuts and the ramp leading in the City Hall. And the next meeting is tentatively scheduled for the month of September. And that's all I have on that, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Segal, Housing.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting of the Housing Authority was nothing significant to report and the next meeting is July 16th at 7:00 PM, Hillside Terrace. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. For Recreation, Mr. Hendrick, do you have that?
I do.
Thank you.
First thing is West End Beach is scheduled to open this Friday afternoon, June 13th at 3:00 PM. The beach will then be open daily from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Life Guards will be on duty every day. All beachgoers are to follow the rules at the beach and the instructions of the Life Guards. Second, the summer playground and youth center schedule is finished. Summer programming starts Monday, June 30th. Copies of the schedule have been distributed to the elementary schools and we have plenty of copies at the youth center. It is also posted on our Facebook page. If you want or need a copy, please contact Recreation Office at 858-4045 or email us at pjrec@frontier.net. Three, the youth center's Friday night, teen night is finished for the school year. Teen night will resume when school starts back up in September. The Friday scheduled at the youth center for June 13th, 20th, and 27th will be 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Next, Dinner Along to Delaware on Fireworks Show will be on Saturday, July 5th. Dinner Along to Delaware will be held at Riverside Park from 6:00 PM to 8:30. Cost for this limited ticket event is $20 for adults, $8 for children ages four through 12. Tickets are limited to 500. Fireworks from Point Peter will follow at approximately 9:00 PM. Contact the Recreation Office to purchase tickets or to sponsor this event. And lastly, the next Recreation Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 18th at 7:00 PM at the youth center on Pike Street. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Tourism, Mr. Bobozzo.
The only thing I have to report is that there's a slight change in the date of this week's meeting. It was originally scheduled for tomorrow night, Tuesday the 10th, at 6:30. Has been changed to June 11th, which is this Wednesday, 6:30, at the downstairs conference room here in the City Hall. And at that meeting, planning for the Fall Foliage Festival and the Kris Kendall one will continue. And that is all that I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ritchie, zoning.
Thank you, Mayor. The zoning board met on June 3rd. At that time, the boards have been a little inactive the last two or three months, so at that time they approved the February minutes to the zoning board, which was held on February 4th. After that, they had two pre-submissions. The first pre-submission was Beverly Codisco and Christine Adi on 5 Cross Street. They have a variance for a lot, 25 feet with 25 fifth width lot area and 2,500 square feet permitting. One of the setbacks were pre-existing non-conforming lots. Basically what they want to do is make two lots, 50 by 109. There was no questions from the board. And at that time, they approved a public hearing for July 1st. The second pre-submission was from William McGyseck on 17 Orange Street and an area variance of 22, 32 feet to 11, two-family dwelling. This is a house that was in his family for years. He doesn't live in the area anymore, came back, has remodeled the house and would like it to be put back to a two-family dwelling. The board, one of the questions the board asked was, he had hired local contractors and they said yes. And at that time, the board approved a public hearing once again for July 1st. And that's also, our next zoning board meeting will be July 1st up in the Common Council Chambers at 7:00 PM. That's all I have to add, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And planning board?
Planning board hasn't met yet prior to their council meeting, but we are scheduled to be June 17th, 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Plumbing and Electrical Boards, Mr. Segal.
Thank you, Mayor. The plumbing board last met on June the 4th and there are no meetings during the summer months, so they'll be coming back in the fall. Ditto with the electrical board.
Senior Advisory, Mr. Segal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I met with the senior housing representatives and residents during the past month, as I usually do, and there were no significant issues to report there. Also, I have a flyer here that I'll put up on Facebook and the city's Facebook page. The Orange County Office of the Aging and Mount St. Mary College are sponsoring a really smart patient program. Learn how to be an advocate for yourself at the doctor's office. It's on June 18th at 12:30 PM at the Farnham House on Olster Place. Again, that's June 18th at 12:30 PM at the Farnham House. Refreshments will be provided and participants will receive a follow-up call and on completion of that call, they'll be sent a $10 gift certificate to CBS. For more information, contact the Office of the Aging at 845-615-3710. And I do not think that reservations are necessary. If you want to get involved in this, and I'll be there because I'd like to be a smart patient, it's June 18th at 12:30 at the Farnham House.
And they'd like to get 10 bucks. Add the 10 bucks.
He's trying to figure out how he can get from CVS $10 without having to drive to CVS, that's at least $10 away.
Everyone had the same exact thought at the same exact time.
I'll drive people over.
He wants to see if the city bus will take us.
Yeah, it's a senior thing, yeah.
That's nice. Access 23 report?
There is none.
Thank you, sir. Under Mayor's correspondence, I have a handful of things and I'll breeze through them quickly. We'll make sure that as the time is of the essence, I'll get them up on the Facebook page. We want to start off with this Friday, if you're a teacher or you're a senior at the Port Jervis High School, the Fort Knox Car Wash and Roll on Church Street, 18, oh, excuse me, not Church Street, Orange Street, 18 Orange Street, is offering that, it's prom night on Friday, so offering the seniors free car wash, free vacuum, and air fresheners for their cars.
And it's high school seniors, right?
It's high school seniors, yes. Unless you're going to the prom.
Unless you show up in a top.
When Congressman Maloney was here a couple of weeks ago, I said to him, I said, listen, I said, you know, I hate to be the stepchild and that's why when I grab your ear, when I grab your ear, I'm going to talk it off. I said to him, I said, you know, you have all these satellite offices, but there's no satellite office here in Port Jervis and our people in Port Jervis need to talk about social security, that's a big thing here. I wish, you know, in working, maybe getting the social security, come back here at least once a month. IRS issues, Medicare, Medicaid problems in veterans. So after a little tug and pull, Maria Ingracia, who works for Congressman Maloney, Congressman Maloney opened up a satellite office, it's actually going to be in my conference room. It is the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, from 10:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. So they'll be here, she'll be here twice a month, or another representative will be here twice a month in my room. Again, it's the second and fourth Wednesday from 10:00 to 4:00. So the first time she's going to come here is this Wednesday and she'll be here from 10:00 to 4:00. The number is 845-213-8734, but making appointments is not necessary. Again, that number is 845-213-8734.
Very good, that's excellent. Thank you.
I do have the announcement for the Crop Walk and at this time, do I have a motion to approve the Crop Walks?
No. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bobozzo, a second by Mr. Bell, discussion?
I used to help organize the Crop Walk, it's a fantastic event that I would encourage everybody to get involved with or to donate to. It does serve about six food pantries in the area and the turnout every year is amazing. And not only that, but the walk, I never walked across the Delaware River Bridge before I started getting involved in that and actually, it's quite a cool thing, so I would advise everybody to get involved in that if possible.
Thank you, any other discussion?
Mayor, I'm just going to go to Jack and the Chief.
Uh, yeah.
It's a ways out.
Yeah, it's a ways out in October. Yep.
What does CRAP stand for?
Communities responding to overcome poverty.
You almost got it.
Poverty.
Poverty, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make sure it goes to the Chief and DPW. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. I'd like to set our next, our next Common Council meeting for a public hearing, you know what, I didn't write the date, that was the date of our next meeting.
23rd.
23rd.
17.
Is that right, June 23rd? June 23rd for a public hearing on the 421F Residential Improvements Exemption. As I said before, this residential improvements exemption goes on any one or two-family home, it does not have to be owner occupied, it is, it is an exemption to the main structure of that property. It can be an improvement or it can be an addition to the main building and what you will receive is after your reassessment is done, the difference between your original assessment and your new assessment will be 100% exempt the first year, 75% exempt the second, 50% the third, 25% the fourth, and then you'll pay the full assessed value on the fifth year. This is just to help offset the cost of doing an improvement to your house. So do I have a motion to, I need a motion to set that public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, a second by Mr. Segal, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. All right, something very, very cool I was introduced to today, thing called Tap Try States. You can either do it as an app on your phone or your iPad, or you can go to taptrystates.com. You need to have something, you need a, you need your car fixed, you need a restaurant, hundreds of things are loaded into this and it's free of charge for us to check it out. There's coupons online and I was really impressed with it. So if you get a chance to take a look at it, it's again, taptrystates.com or just if you tap, if you write in as your app, Tap Try States, it'll come up as an app on your phone.
Try States, I agree?
No, no, it's all one word. And taptrystates.com is all one word. I want to congratulate Jalen Census for winning the stock class yesterday, Ryan Costello, maybe you might know him as Jim McGowan's grandson, won super stock, Hannah Pizlin won in the master's class, and Alexa Guestner won as our super kids in the 15th Soapbox Derby. It was a wonderful day, really, really nice outside, can't, couldn't ask for better weather, better crowds, lots of food, lots of camaraderie. Many of you attended and it was very much appreciated. So we wish them good luck at the end of July, the last Saturday in July, they will be in Akron, Ohio, representing Port Jervis and who knows, one of these days we just may bring home a championship. I don't know if Cody gave it to me. No, 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 he just gave it to me, because I asked for it. And I know, I know you have one sitting right here. That's what I'm looking for, thank you.
You stole it.
Well, I saw it sitting here. This Saturday is Flag Day, June 14th, so I want to make the announcement that this Saturday, June 14th, at Riverside Park, 7:00 PM, there will be a concert of patriotic favorites performed by the Broom Street Traveling Band and that actually will begin at 6:30. So if you come a little earlier, you can listen to the music. In past years, the Mayor will be given a proclamation and there will be a patriotic sing-along, so we welcome you all to the Flag Day Ceremony, again, this Saturday, actually, I'll say 6:30. Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask for a motion to, oh, many of you don't know, Cody has agreed to take upon the farmers market. As you know, we didn't get the grant, but we're still going to go forward with the market. He's contacting the Cornell Cooperative and the firm out of Montague that helps out with the Milford, organizing the Milford Farmers Market and making those contacts, so I want to make a motion, if I could get a motion for allowing the farmers markets, if approved by the Mayor's Office, to be exempt from the peddler's permit.
So.
I have a, thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, a second by Mr. Bobozzo, discussion?
I think we did that.
We did it last year. Yeah, but, and we did it specifically for the press, but it would have to be approved through the Mayor's Office.
Yep.
Okay. And, all right, so any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. You know what, it's sitting right there in front of me. Ah, okay, there was some mention about the Dinner Along to Delaware, it's going to be a fantastic night, July 5th, Saturday, July 5th, so people can spend their July 4th with their families and their friends and then they can come and bring their friends to this event. Now, the biggest thing is that the event is limited to 500 and from what I'm told that there is, about 60 tickets are already sold. So if you want to attend this, what you really need to do is contact the Recreation Department, 858-4045, or you can send a check right to them, put on the notation, and I know that the tickets, Christine Addy is actually a big part of this and I know that the tickets have arrived, so they'll be going back out, but you can contact the Rec Department. If you're a business and you want to be a sponsor, they have sponsor letters also at the Recreation Department and all the proceeds are going to go to the new Rec Center plan for Church Street. So all the restaurants that are donating, are donating their food, the fireworks are the only thing that we do have to pay for them because you have to hire a professional to do that. We were going to try to set them off ourselves, but the Chief said we couldn't, so.
It's highly problematic.
But otherwise, it's going to be a nice night, it's going to be from 6:00 to 8:30 will be the food, there will be music playing over at the park, at Riverside Park, and then at 9 o'clock, they will set the fireworks off from Point Peter. And when I brought the guy from the pyrotechnics company there, you know, the concern was, can it, you know, can it go somewhere and catch something on fire? He assured us, he said, there's not going to be any problems at all and, but of course we're taking all the safety measures, we'll have Fire Department, obviously, there on standby and down on Hudson Street in that area. Nice thing is, is our insurance company told us that they, they're doing it, they're allowing it to happen and they're not charging us any extra, so they must feel pretty confident in it also. This is going to be a great event, a great kickoff for a new recreation youth community center in Port Jervis and I'll be talking with the Council too, as we proceed forward in funding for that Recreation Center. Orange and Rocklands coming around to trim trees, Stanley's happy, right?
Yeah, we'll be happy if we guide them properly.
Well, we had a, myself and Mr. Farr had a good meeting with them, I told them I don't want any trees looking like this and that we need to make the trees look a lot better than what they have here on this piece of paper and they assured us of that. We also talked about some agreements that if there are trees that are near the utilities that do need to come down, first of all, I want to let the citizens know that it is their right to allow, this has to be signed by them, to allow them to take the tree down. Also, what we've done is we've requested from Orange and Rockland, they forwarded to their, whatever department it is, for full replacement of trees that are cut down. So hopefully we'll, and in a minute I'll be announcing something too with the trees, but we want to make sure that we're not getting botched up trees and they had an arborist there, he assured us that it wouldn't happen, that he will work very closely with Mr. Farr and the people that he puts in charge. And when a tree gets cut down, if you've seen some of the trees that they've cut down, they cut them to 10 feet, we made an agreement with them that we would let, they would cut it down to the ground, we'll grind the stump. So that way, you're not going to see 10-foot cut trees just around the city.
Mayor, it's got to be more than just the trees that they cut down. They're destroying trees and within a few years, the trees are dying. All those diagrams that's on that letter, you can ride the streets of Port Jervis and see everyone.
And see every one of them, we talked about that.
Go to my house and I had an agreement with them that they wouldn't touch my tree, which was on my property, and if you go to my house, it, the diagram's on that piece of paper. We need to, and we will do it at codes, we need to have a law, a local law that will require them to replace any tree that dies because of their professional horticultural trimming.
And they, and they were promising, like I said, there was an arborist there, so obviously somebody, they've taken notice, I'm sure they've done this in other communities too.
They've had an arborist every time that we argue about trees, so my faith doesn't go far.
Okay.
We used to videotape.
Tomorrow night is crucimport, last week it was rained out, there's a 30% chance of showers tomorrow, so just keep an eye out. If it's raining, it'll probably be canceled again, but it's set for tomorrow. It was mentioned that the ASK Dare graduation was today and the Youth Safety Day was Saturday, a lot of important things being done for our kids. I just want to mention that Jersey Avenue, the traffic signal, some of the, some of the kids, it's not just the elderly, but some of the kids and, and people from Waters Edge are having difficulties crossing East Main Street because of that light. When you come up Jersey Avenue, even if you get the red light, you make the right-hand turn on red and they're unable to make that crossing. So Mr. Farr and the Chief have been in contact with the company that's going to come in and there's actually going to be a countdown crosswalk timer put in and when that countdown crosswalk timer has been activated by somebody that needs to cross, the right-hand turn at Jersey Avenue will get a red arrow, so they won't be able to turn and the people will be able to cross. So that's in the works.
Thank you.
I do know that there's a few Yankee tickets left, if you, if you want to go to the Yankees game on July 23rd, and I'm going to say it's under 10 tickets left, contact John Fagion at the, at the Rec Center, 858-4045. Some good news with Arbor in Port Jervis is the Port Jervis Adopt a Tree Program Phase Two project has been approved for a state chair of $5,134.
Great, thank you.
So this will, this will really, really help with the planting of trees and flourishing of downtown Port Jervis. And that just came the end of last week.
And the last thing that I think I have here.
Is coming up, Port Jervis Fire Department activities for the week of July 7th through July 12th, Port Jervis Fire Department Parade is upon us. So on Saturday, July 12th, as always, the City Council is invited to participate in the parade and the escort division with a lineup at 1:30. The parade will start off at the post office and end for us at the reviewing stands on Kingston Avenue. Thursday night, the Fire Department and personnel and anybody else that wishes to attend visits the cemeteries to pay respects to our former fire chiefs of the Port Jervis Fire Department and some, several other members that have passed away. They will be leaving the parking lot of the municipal, municipal building at 6:15 PM. So that's the Thursday, July 10th at 6:15, right out here, and will be going to visit the cemeteries. On Friday, July 11th at 6:15, will be the memorial service at the Fireman's Monument and that is right over in the minimall parking lot between Ball and Front Street, right across from St. Mary's. So again, Thursday will be 6:15, meet out here to go to the cemeteries. The next day, Friday, will be the 6:15 Fireman's Monument Memorial Service and then of course, the parade will kick off at 2:00 on the 12th, July 12th. And that's all that I have. City Clerk Treasurer's report, Mrs. Wozniger.
Yes, City Clerk's Office has actually been very busy. At their next meeting, we will be presenting to you the tax lien sale list, we begin the processing effective July 1st. We've done our preliminary list and this year we have 354 parcels on that list as compared to 333 last year. We can tell you there's a lot of repeats on that list where people are continually delinquent. The other thing on the City Clerk's Office is that I know we have advertised, the Mayor, I believe, has put it out on his Facebook page or is going to.
I did.
We are looking for per diem health. I do have a, an extended medical absence on the part of our Deputy City Clerk Treasurer, so we are looking for per diem help if anybody knows anybody with experience in payroll, accounting, or human resources, those are the three priority areas for a per diem replacement during an extended medical leave. And I believe that's it for our office.
Thank you, Mrs. Wozniger. Old business, Mr. Segal.
Yes, let me get reorganized here. It wasn't ready. What did I do? Hang on one second, I'll go here and... Thank you, thank you, Mayor. This has to go under really old business. We neglected a member of the Port Jervis Fire Department, Frank Bell has 52 years with Tri-State Host Company Number Six. Rest assured that I will bring this to Dick Drew's attention, right?
What did he mean about really old business? He does say whatever he can.
He gets hooked so much.
The only time he tells me I'm not old is when it's time to go campaigning and he wants to go all over the board, across the house.
Well, Mike McCarthy's one, so we have to pick a new one. As usual, if you see code violations or concerns in your neighborhood, be sure to call the Billings Department. We now have new tools to help you, help us help you. So call them whenever you see a concern that, that needs attention. Also, if you see other problems, call the Police Department promptly and as Mike McCarthy used to say, if you see something, say something. Walking in the streets and crossing the crosswalks, in my opinion, is not getting much better. There is some more compliance with, with the crosswalks, I don't see much compliance with the walking in the streets. So it's for your own safety not to do either one, I'm telling the residents out there. So please, walk in the middle of the street in the dark with dark clothing or with a child in a carriage is simply stupid. And that's politically correct as I can get.
Thanks, Joe.
And that's all I have under, well, actually, no, I'd like to extend our sympathies to Cheryl Galanancus, who lost both a mother and a husband in the same week. And I know how tough that is. Also, we have been passing a lot of local laws to try to help the residents of our community to live a better life, to have a better community to live in, to be able to recreate in their own backyards, to have others do what they would do. And, and we have public hearings. And, and we have public hearings, and we have codes meetings the first Wednesday of every month, and we invite people to come to these meetings and these hearings to express their concerns, and then we can make adjustments as we did at.